Evening and welcome to our November twentieth city council meeting. And I'd like to start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I'll be filling in for Father PJ who couldn't make it tonight, so if you'd bow your heads with me. Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight and we thank you for the rain. It's been a nice slow rain and we appreciate that, Lord. And we thank you for the good weather we're having, other than that. And then we'd ask for wisdom tonight and guidance as we go about the business of the city here and help us to make good decisions. And we ask this all in Christ's name, amen. With that, we're ready to review the minutes of the November sixth meeting, council.
Mayor, make a motion for the minutes of the November sixth twenty twenty-three city council meeting.
Second. Got a motion in the second. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Let's move down to our appropriation ordinance number eleven.
Make a motion for approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve this appropriation ordinance. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I don't see any visitors here tonight that aren't supposed to be here. Let's move down to our first item of business, ordinance establishing sewer rates, and I'll turn it over to staff.
Yes, Mayor, council, I do not have much of a detailed presentation tonight. We actually went over the draft of this ordinance in detail at our at our prior meeting. So just real quick, the highlights, the impact of this ordinance would be to eliminate the sewer capital fee as a standalone fee on the utility bills. But what it's doing is essentially absorbing that fee within the singular base and usage fee that we have. So you just have one, one line on the utility bill related to your wastewater billing. And we talked about all the various reasons for that at the prior meeting. The goal of this move, again, is it's not to make any money. In fact, we tried to put together a budgetary model that would make this budget neutral. Given the way that that all works together with the escalator, we did have to to play with the numbers for those tiers slightly to make that work. And in the grand scheme of things, I think about thirty-one hundred or so of our customers were expected to see a slight reduction and that's going to be the regular residential customer, the vast majority of residential customers. And then you will see some slight increases on the higher level users and commercial customers that even that out. But over a seven-year period, the model forecasts that this move would be roughly budget neutral, about five, six hundred dollars difference overall over that period. So I'm not going to go into any more detail than that unless council would like me to. So I'm going to turn it over to council for consideration of this ordinance here tonight.
I might just mention real quick that our projector's broken for those of you at home, if you're not seeing some of the things. And that's why we don't have any video up on the wall tonight.
I move for approval of ordinance number twenty-two twenty-nine, establishing rates and charges for sewer service of municipality owned and operated wastewater utility of the city of Augusta, Kansas, classifying the users of such sewer services, providing for the effective date of such rates and changes, and amending chapter fifteen, article four, section four, four, two of the code of the city of Augusta, Kansas, and repealing ordinance number twenty-two oh seven of the city of Augusta, Kansas.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any questions? All those in favor.
Got a roll call, Mike.
It's a roll call.
Huddleston?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Rivas?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Lefler?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And Mayor, for folks at home, this change will go into effect essentially the first billing in the new year, right? So the current billing will continue through the end of this year.
Okay. This is to item two, ordinance establishing a common consumption area in downtown Augusta. And I'll turn it over to staff.
Yes, Mayor and council, this ordinance was also presented in draft form at the prior meeting and discussed in detail. Since that meeting, there was another city that announced that they had just done something similar. So the city of Independence and now the city of Hayes have created these districts with similar ordinances in their downtowns. And one of the things that had been holding us up was the review from insurance and trying to get clarity on what they wanted us to require of the the different licensees that would be participating. So the way that this will work is the city is considered the common consumption area permit holder. And then a business with a brick and mortar location adjoining can participate by becoming a licensee and submitting a form to the state indicating that they want to participate in the common consumption area. After many back and forths with insurance, they did end up backing off of all of the different levels of requirements that they were originally encouraging us to do. But they did ask if we could have a hold harmless agreement or some hold harmless language that licensees would sign on to when they choose to participate. And so, working with the city attorney, there there is a provision that is in the draft. So you essentially have two versions of the draft that you can consider. You can consider one that doesn't have this language and doesn't require that, which, again, we haven't seen in some of the other cities. Or you can choose this version that is presented here tonight. And I will read this provision. This would be the liability provision. It says each licensee within a CCA that's common consumption area shall be liable for violations of all liquor laws governing sale and consumption of alcoholic liquor or cereal malt beverage that occur on the licensee's premises. Licensee shall provide any insurance coverage or proof of coverage. And then this is the provision that is different between the two versions. And they hold harmless agreement in favor of the city as may be required by the governing body as a condition of participating in the CCA. And at the end of the draft ordinance, you can see the language of the hold harmless agreement that the city attorney drafted, so I'll leave that on the screen. So I know folks at home can't read it, but governing body can can read that. But Andrew, do you maybe want to make a comment or two about what do you think this language says? Or what does it do exactly by virtue of requiring this?
It would have the licensee business indemnify basically the city or defend the city, pay any judgment that would be against the city. In the event of a lawsuit, and the key language is arising out of participation in that CCA or the consumption of alcoholic beverage of any kind originating from the licensee. It's a pretty simple agreement. It's just, you know, one page and it is, it was drafted with that insurance requirement in mind.
I have a question on that. Considering the common consumption area is is common open area, how would you know the responsibility of any licensee?
So the way that the common consumption area is presented, each, sorry, is constructed. Each licensee will have a cup that is identifying the origination of the alcohol that that individual is carrying. Now, that's not always going to be a perfect answer if someone is doing bad things necessarily out on the out on the street. But some of the other provisions try to limit them from getting multiple cups or cups from multiple businesses at the same time. It's set up in a way where I think it may be easier to trace than you would think. But again, I don't know what that means in terms of the hold harmless and liability. But when a licensee allows someone to leave their business, they have a cup identifying that the alcohol came from that licensee. And presumably, that's the only cup that that person will be holding if they're consuming out there. Because I think the rest of the ordinance prevents them from getting it refilled or taking it anywhere else to use it. So that's going to be the last place they got alcohol from is what they're carrying on their person.
So the so the licensee, so the city actually gets a permit for the district? And then each licensee applies to the state for approval?
Yes.
Not through the city?
To participate, correct.
So there's no fee that comes to the city from the licensee?
Not unless you're going to choose to charge one.
Well, that brings up some other matters I was wanting to discuss because I understand it may require increased law enforcement area, which is going to have to come from general tax dollars. It may incur increased trash service because these are throwaway cups and there'll have to be some business, someone pick that up and maintain that trash during the entire in the entire district. And there's going to be signage. I know last time when Jamie was here and I asked the question, she said Go Augusta was going to cover the cost of that. But after reading your report for tonight's meeting, it says that is, that isn't necessarily true, that the city is going to pay for it. And then after the initial cost, I'm sure there will be maintenance on it. So there are going to be costs to operate this district, but the city's not receiving any revenue to help run the district, the licensees. Is that right?
So Go Augusta did indicate that they would pay for that. The way this is drafted, and again, I just carried this language over from a previous meeting, says city and Go Augusta will need to determine who will pay these costs. And Jamie, this might be a good piece of the meeting to participate in. So I know at one point, there was an ask submitted to C T B to consider assisting with that. I don't know if that's still on the table or if Go Augusta has the money on hand to work on the signage and stuff like that. So but yeah, they had indicated that they were planning on providing the signage and I think covering the hundred dollar permit as well.
Yes.
And I don't know that any of that has changed. So if that language leads to confusion, I apologize. That was a generic statement I've had in there since the original staff report.
Go Augusta doesn't intend on paying for the fee as well as the signage that is required when it comes to the extra trash. I don't see how that's related. I pick up a ton of trash from the park every day from just standard people being there. So I don't think that's going to be an issue. And I also don't see it being increased police function either.
So one thing you could consider, council, and again, all of that's on the table. If you're going to choose to charge fees, those are options that you do have. The permit that we're getting from the state is for a single year. And so even at the state level, once this thing is created, it's not a set it and forget it sort of thing, as we have to continuously reapply. So if you wanted to treat the first year as an evaluation period and see if we have any costs and things that come along with it, and then you have a basis for figuring out what you would want to charge to recoup that, you could do it that way. Or you could try to establish something now. But again, I think given that it has that one-year timeframe on it, you're not committing in the long term to whatever decision you make tonight, you'd have some flexibility on how you could handle that in the future if you recognize any problems or costs that the city didn't foresee in the beginning. I'd be comfortable either way.
Another question I was wondering about is I noticed that the district is laid out is basically from alley east to alley west along State Street, encompassing the depot down to encompassing the the Bow Alley or about the roundabout. So that's going to include the public areas within that boundary line other than streets, parking spaces, and public parking lots?
Yes.
Is this the way I read this? So we would also include the playground area and we'd also include the the Veterans Memorial?
Yes. The way this is drafted, yes.
Okay.
Josh, have you talked to any of the other business owners downtown other than like the ones that are, you know, using the that sell the beer, whatever?
So I have not. I know when Jamie made her initial presentation, she said that they they had a committee of folks.
I spoke with three business owners today, personally myself, and they didn't know anything about it. And I tried to explain it to them a little bit, and none of them thought that it would be productive for their businesses. And I just thought I'd ask that because I found that interesting that we might be voting on something down here that possibly some of the people downtown don't know anything about. And in the area that's going to be boxed off or whatever, you know?
May I speak to that? We did a survey. Sean Davis went and visited every business downtown that was open. No one had a problem with or said no to this. Now, this doesn't take into account, if you don't want to participate, you don't have to participate. So I'm, if you want one, you'll have a sticker that says no common consumption allowed. Simple as that. Number two, it doesn't relate to most businesses. This is for retail purposes. I'm not going to go get my accounting done with my beer in hand. You have to take into effect what this is about is primarily during events, whether we have a sip and shop event, whether it be the Brick Street Bazaar, whether it be those type of things. But it allows for us to do things also during the week. So there was a survey done. We do have those results as well, and they were done, I think, in June, I want to say initially. So.
Two of the three that I talked to today were retail, and they didn't know about it. And they didn't, they weren't, they didn't, they asked me questions, you know, and I tried to explain it the best that I could.
Did you tell them to come visit me? Because I could explain it to them very well.
I didn't want to speak for you.
No, absolutely. I appreciate that, but I would like to be able to speak with them because, like I said, this wasn't a problem. We did survey them all in advance. If they're newer than that came past June, or I would love the opportunity to speak with them and answer questions because I think there's a lot of misconceptions of what this actually is versus what people want to make it out to be. So I would love to answer any questions that people have regarding it.
I'm not trying to make it out to anything. I'm all about growth downtown and Augusta growing. And I just don't know if it's the right direction for Augusta, you know?
Sure. And that's why I'm here to answer questions, to make sure and set the record straight on some of these things that, like I said, that's why we have ideas of what we think's going to happen versus what the plan is to happen. So I want to make sure we get that straight and answer questions you may have.
I would also like the populace to be comfortable with this because I think this is a major morals issue, so to speak, for the community. And I want them to be comfortable with what we're doing here. And I spoke with two people, not even from my ward over the weekend, I think they were out of four. And they were not even aware that this was being presented. And one was maybe okay with it, not overly excited. The other didn't want it at all. So I would like the community to settle in and be comfortable with this before it's passed and made law per se. Now, the other thing I feel about this is ever since Streetscape was enacted, and I know Go Augusta took over Streetscape and the downtown marketing area, it has been attempted to make the activities in the downtown area family-oriented, family-friendly. And that's why we closed the streets a lot to have parades, bazaars, one thing and another, the the Trick or Treat Street, the Bugs Bunny, all that takes place downtown. Now, that we want to open it up for public alcohol consumption on the sidewalks, speak somewhat about Augusta. I know there are some who will benefit from it. But I want the community to be satisfied with it, and I've not reached that conclusion yet. And to be saying that we're doing this to attract destination-location people, that may be the purpose that you're targeting it for, but it's still our people's town, our citizens' town. And I want them to be okay with it. And there's a mass of people that I've not heard from. And one of the reasons I think we've not heard from them is they, the common concept over town all the time is, well, I didn't even know what was happening. I didn't even know it was being proposed. I don't know how we get that word out, but I think this is a major step that the council is going to be taking in setting the the tone or the attitude of what Augusta is or what we want Augusta to be. And I'm just not comfortable with saying that we want Augusta to be about walking the sidewalks of Augusta with alcohol.
Well, I'd like to ask, are we wanting to go back to prohibition days? Or is the problem with the alcohol, or I'm not exactly sure because, then let me?
Now, let me talk to you, Ben. I'm not a teetotaler by any means.
I'm sorry, what?
I'm not a teetotaler by any means, and I drink on occasion too. But I think there is a time and place for things. And when we have drinking establishments, that's drinking establishments within a confined area. We also have provisions that we can have some public events. You one time sponsored the Steaks on the Bricks, and we had alcohol at that venue. There are other times where you can have them. They've now opened it up to, you know, we have wine at the art gallery. And so there are opportunities for those things to take place. I think that is a vast difference than it is just acquiring a drink in an establishment and then walking the streets downtown with it. To me, there is a big difference. It may not be in your mind, but to me it is. And for many of those I've talked to, it is a big difference.
Well, and like I said, this hasn't been put out to the public yet because we wanted to find a good way to do this. And we're going to explain to the public what is allowed, what isn't allowed, as well as to the restaurant and bar owners, what their requirements are and what they're expected to do. Now, like I said in the past, you guys can come up with a lot of different ideas of what this is. But the goal is I can come here, get a bar, a drink at Shane's, walk to Sean's, go around, do a little shopping. I don't want to bring up the stuff that's been done that you've allowed for years. So I'm not going to do that. But the point is, this is something that's been worked on for a very long time. This is something we're trying to move forward in our community. And the silent majority, you're not going to hear anything from. And that is a large majority of people. This is not saying I'm going to make anyone put a drink in their hand or walk anywhere with it. This is allowing this to happen. That's what, this is what this is about. We just want to progress. We do want to move forward. And I know it's going to be difficult with a lot of those things. But you're right, you're not hearing it because the majority is the silent majority that you're not going to hear from often.
Yeah, my feedback's been completely the opposite of your guys'. You know, I've talked to younger, older, I went to the senior center, you know, because those were the ones telling me that they didn't know how to hear this stuff and figure all this stuff out. So I personally went there, got them on Facebook, gave them all the links to everything. Look, tomorrow night, I'm going to meet with the Lions Club to get them on everything so they can watch these meetings. I mean, this is the third time we've talked about this at a city council meeting, and I don't see a group of people in here fighting against it. So I don't think the majority is saying no, in my opinion. I think it's being done responsibly. This is the third meeting. We're breaking this thing out, you know, all the way down. And I haven't had a business owner mention anything to me about it. I've reached out to a lot of them, talked to a lot of them. And I had one person call me, say, no, we don't want this. This is a bad idea. And like I said, this is the third time it's been brought up here in a council meeting for the community to watch. So I don't know where else they're going to see this or hear it talked about if it's not here in front of everyone. And like I said, we know when the city doesn't want something or people don't want something, this place is full. And there's nobody here that doesn't want it. There's nobody here. It's my opinion.
I've got about four things I want to touch on. Five, because first thing is, I have no problem with the common consumption. Second thing is, I think the best thing about it is it's going to be a one-year trial because it has to be renewed. So if there is problems, if there is a outbreak of people against it, it can be before the council again and determine whether to do it or not. So I think that's another good thing about it. Another thing is, I do agree with what Andrew put together, the hold harmless agreement. I do think that is essential. The signage cost, and Jamie, you said Go Augusta is going to do. I think that should be in our verbiage here, so there's no if and ands down the road about who is paying for that. And the last thing is, Andrew, I need your opinion on this, whether I'm being too picky of being a an unlicensed attorney. Look at three dash eight oh two E. That's the container and one drink per person on street limit. The very last sentence, where they're talking about paper or plastic cups shall be single-serve, not be refilled by the licensee identified on the cup or by other license established participating in the CCA. We've talked about this before, you know? You also do not want people going out with this cup that's got the licensee's name on and filling it up themselves. I wonder if that needs to be added. They're just, they have one more thing to keep from going wrong. Am I being too picky about that? Is that already being assumed, or should that be written in there too?
I don't see why adding that, I mean, it's just more clarification.
That's exactly what I was getting at, Jamie.
I don't see it as a problem.
Be very clear, the only drink that goes in there is the one that's in there when you walk out. Nothing else.
Because there's going to be some smart aleck, it's going to go out to his pickup truck and pull out a can or a bottle, fills cup back up.
You guys are doing great. I mean, I think if that's your intention, you ought to write it in there.
Okay.
First of all, how can they get out to their truck when they got to go on the street?
I don't think anybody's going to get after them stepping off the curb. What a good point, Mike. That's all I have to say about it. And I guess with that, if nobody else has any more?
I did some research, and I'm all in favor of this concept. I think, you know, the moral thing, you know, if you're not trying new things, then you're probably dying. My concern about this whole ordinance is the city of Augusta being the permit holder. I don't think the city needs to put itself in the position to accept and assume the liability to have in that liquor license per se to allow this to happen. I did some research, and there's thirty-two common consumption permits in Kansas from thirty-one cities. The city of Yeh Center has two. Of those thirty-two permits, nineteen of them list the city as a permit holder. The other thirteen are either the downtown organizations or what I would assume to be a private organization like which the Old Town Association, Merrill Companies LLC has one up in Johnson County, KPS, Park Place Village has one in in Johnson County. So I think there's there's a justifiable split there of some cities willing to accept that responsibility and liability to be that permit holder. I'm just not comfortable with the city of Augusta doing that.
Well, and the reason that we did it as not a Go Augusta thing is because a lot of the events that are held downtown are not Go Augusta events, whether it be Which Is Night Out, Trick or Treat Street, the Car Show, any Go Augusta events, we can make sure everything is happening as it should. But if it's not our event and somebody else is putting it on, I can't control what what happens with those things. So that's why we wanted it to be, you know, as a city organization because there are other things that happen that are not our specific events. And there are things that happen that we don't necessarily agree with, but we don't have control over to stop. We can't say yes or no on these things. So that's why we didn't want to.
But this is every Thursday, Friday, Saturday night, not just during a spatial event.
It is. But I honestly don't, if you've never been downtown on a Thursday night especially, there's not people downtown. Friday nights, maybe, if they're going to the movie. I think, is it possible? Yes. But that's not the main design of it, is. I don't think you're. I don't think you're going to stop and drive by and see people on the sidewalk drinking their beers, especially in winter. You're not going to want to be outside doing that. Could it happen? Sure, absolutely. But that was the main focus is, you know, we, we can't control what other people do. And if the businesses downtown decide they want to get together and, and have a pub walk, for example, that's, that's not a Go Augusta event. So there's, there's, that's the reason that we didn't say, yes, we'll go ahead and take that, because we can't control those things.
Right. I, I looked at that.
And the city of Augusta can't either. I mean, if a group of, a group of businesses want to get together and have this pub walk, the city of Augusta has nothing to say for it. They don't have to do an event, event permit or anything to walk up and down the sidewalk.
Right.
Go from bar to bar to bar. And, and even now, you know, they have to keep it inside, but, I mean, it's just, just my opinion, and I don't think it's, the cities, cities should not be putting ourselves in the position to accept that responsibility and liability for stuff we really have no control of.
Well, the liability follows the liquor, just as it would if you're in the establishment. And that's what the state law says, is the liability follows the liquor. So if I drink, I get a drink from Shane's, I walk outside, I fall down, I get in a car accident, Shane's is responsible at that point. Shane's staff is trained to know when to cut someone off, how much they can be served. So it's no different than if I am in his building drinking it and leave, or if I am walking down the street and then decide to leave. That's where the liability isn't on the city. This is, the, the hold harmless is just an additional step that most don't have, just because we want to make sure the city does feel comfortable with it.
I want to quote it, but I, I remember reading somewhere that says the permit holder is responsible for any liquor law violations that occur within the district.
It just says violations, it doesn't say liquor law violations. I don't, I don't know what that leaves open. When I had the conversation with ABC, so ABC is the, the licensing regulating agency that they affirmed the, the liquor follows the cup sort of thing. That, where, where that changes is if the city is going to allow the origination of the liquor to occur within the permitted area as opposed to within a licensee. So if you're going to have an event where liquor is originating from the street, whether that be a, you know, just a special event, or you're going to serve it personally. So, uh, city of Andover, as an example, when they do Greater Andover Days, they buy a liquor liability insurance policy because the city actually sells the alcohol. So when you, when you take that step, then that liability becomes much more clear when you're simply allowing it in the common consumption area. It, it seems like that logic of follows the cup is, is what ABC had told us, but then, you know, our insurance carrier, which is our insurance carrier, thinks that we should have insurance. And e- every type of coverage you could have, but they backed off of all of that to this point and said in several of those emails that it seems like the liability to the city is actually pretty low. But if you can get this hold harmless, that's what we would like you to have. So I, I'm not discounting the concern in any way, I'm just explaining the various times we asked those questions to some of those different folks what they had said. So I, I think any layers you put in there protects the city more. Not doing it protects the city more than doing it. But after I'd gone through those conversations with those different agencies and the carrier, where they settled was, it is a relatively low risk of liability, and if you can get this, we'd encourage you to get this. And that was the hold harmless. So that was the nature of my interactions with those folks.
I looked at a lot of those common consumption areas, Ron, and we're looking at one between the brewery and Shane's, to use that outdoor area as a common consumption between the both. And that would be something that obviously has nothing to do with the city. And that would be a common consumption area that's permitted to us, the owners, to where you can go out into the courtyard of Shane's. And I think that's what some of those are when they say they're not on the city, because there, there wasn't a lot. There was about thirty-seven. I went through, did a research to see if it was possible to where we can share that area between the brewery. And it was kind of the same thing, they, they come out of ours with our cup and they go out of Shane's with his cup, so you know where the alcohol's going. You're not walking from our brewery into Shane's is against the rules. You can just walk out to the courtyard, have your drink, and when you want another one, you throw it away and you go inside and you get another one. And that was the common consumption within that area. And the city's obviously not any part of that.
Another angle I would throw in here, your ordinance does include provisions for a special permit approved by the governing body. So this is the language that was actually contemplating that scenario where if you're going to change this framework and consider having something originate within the district, then at that point, when the council does a special event permit requiring additional insurance coverage or something, would make a lot of sense to me if you're going to allow that outside of like a regular caterer. If you're going to allow events that don't comply with this, then I, I think at that time, you certainly want to layer up in your insurance coverage is, whether that's the private entity or the city or both, just to make sure you're, you're covered. And again, that's kind of contemplated in here, it doesn't specifically say, but in my mind, when we gave those special permit allowances, it was those situations that do not comply with this general setup.
Could you explain what a non-contiguous service area is?
Um, so the, the statute, and again, the Kansas statute is where this language comes from, so that's actually not even specific to our ordinance, that's just pulled from the statute. They contemplate something where a licensee has the ability to request from the city to serve somewhere else in the common consumption area that is not actually their business. So they could designate like here on this sidewalk in this little area, we would like to serve there. But I believe this leaves it completely up to the governing body, whether you're even going to allow that or not. So the state statute says licensees have the ability to request that, but then governing body has the option, whether you're going to approve that or not.
They would get that permission from the city even though they're requesting their, their license from the state?
They would get the, yes, because the city is the permit holder. And I believe that's the way that the, the statute reads. Let me find that real quick. Because I think this wording is just pulled directly.
So if the statute then operates, let's say, in the four hundred block, they could get a non-contiguous permit in the five hundred block?
Says, "In addition to their license premises, one or more licensees that have requested and received permission to participate in the CCA may offer for sale, sell and serve alcohol, liquor, or cereal malt beverage for consumption from one non-contiguous service area within the CCA as designated and approved by the CCA permit holder." So you, you city are the permit holder, they would not have the ability to do non-contiguous if you choose not to allow that as a governing body.
Josh.
Is that, is that on the sidewalk, or is that inside another building somewhere?
So I take that as if we have a special event and it's, they're out in the street selling, that the city would give them permission to go out and sell somewhere besides their building.
So this is regulating the common consumption area, which is not inside the other businesses.
And that has to, that has to have prior permission to do that?
As designated and approved by the CCA permit holder. So to me, this does not pass unless you guys allow it.
So that could be a permanent non-contiguous area. Is that correct?
Did you say permitted or permanent?
That could be a permanent non-contiguous area.
No, Erica, I.
I guess permanent to the extent that a one-year permit, I mean, it, all of the permits expire all at last for one.
So that could give them like two licensed areas to look, to sell from.
You could potentially allow that, yes. You don't have to.
I'd like to move for approval of ordinance number twenty-two thirty, creating a common consumption area, CCA, in the downtown area to be known as Red Brick Social District, and authorize staff to submit common consumption permit holder application of the state of Kansas. Also included in this motion is to use the hold harmless agreement that's in our presentation tonight, and also to add verbiage in there that Go Augusta will be responsible for the cost of signage to go along with this common consumption. And also underneath three dash eight oh two E, add the verbiage there about leaving the places, can't find it here, that serve you with a license identified cup that you cannot personally refill that cup. I don't know, is that good enough verbiage on that, Andrew? That a person cannot fill it themselves with a container of their own? How would you word that, Andrew?
So what, what I would do would be, delete the or after identified on the cup, and then put a comma in there. Put another comma where the period is after CCA at the end of the sentence. And then I would just put a comma and say, how about or be refilled by any other person?
Okay, I'd go along with the verbiage Andrew used about his eliminating the or, putting commas in and ending it by saying or refilled by any other person or party.
So it was, it'll say, "Paper or plastic cup shall be single serve and not refilled by the licensee identified on the cup, comma, by any other licensed establishment participating in the CCA, comma, or by any other person or party."
Correct. Since you amended that for a bit, would it be reasonable to amend it a bit more since you mentioned who's responsible for the signage? So it's not only the original signage, but also maintenance of the signage in the future?
I guess, Mike, the way I'm looking at that is, I think I'd let this first year go by, see how things go, and then if that's something that needs to be addressed, you know, down the road, let the next yearly permit address that.
And Mayor and Council, for, for clarity on the signage, would you be comfortable just with the cost of signage being part of the motion, but not being specifically called out in the ordinance?
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine with me for making the motion.
I think that's the easiest way of doing it, rather than try to include it in the ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, do we need Erica to read all that back?
I'll have to go back to the video probably to get all of it, but the way I have it is, you made the motion, you read the whole motion, and then to add the use of the hold harmless agreement as recommended, add the verbiage about or any other person or party, and then Go Augusta would be responsible for the signage.
That is correct.
Andrew, could you not just put, and not be refilled, period?
So I think it's important for the ordinance to identify parties who can't refill it, even if it is anyone, because you have to hold somebody responsible for it. If you just say it can't be refilled, that's not saying, well, there are certain parties who are specifically banned from doing it. And we say any part, it's, I think it's different to say you can't refill the cup versus having a law that says no person shall refill the cup, because the latter one makes it actually a violation of the ordinance by that person.
I have another quick question while you're there. Would, would Mr. Brown have to abstain from this, since he has a business, a brewery? That would be definitely, it would benefit from the sale of the alcohol down there?
Um, I think I would recommend that.
Does every downtown business owner have to sustain from that? Because there's multiple businesses.
They're not on the council.
What?
They're not on the council.
Say, you don't have an actual license at this point.
He don't have a, he don't have a beer license.
We have a license. If you could walk into it like a, a business.
He doesn't have a license yet either.
Yeah, I don't have a license.
He has no license with the city or the state that I'm aware of.
I was going to make the comment that you did, Erica, and also the fact, not wishing you bad luck, but it might not ever get off the ground either, you know?
Do we have a second?
I know, he's going to discussion more.
Doesn't the business owner own the sidewalk? Or take care of the sidewalk? The business owner?
Correct, yeah.
Supposed to. They're responsible for maintenance, but they don't own it.
Because of me?
Responsibility on the sidewalk, I just.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And, and this, I'm just trying to get people thinking.
Still didn't get a second, right?
I second it, if I'm allowed to vote on it.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a second. Any more questions?
Erica, could you call the rule then?
Huddleston?
No.
Burke?
Yes.
Rivas?
Yes.
Richardson?
No.
Bailey?
Yes.
Lefler?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Martin?
No.
Motion carries.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Jamie.
Let's see, move down to item three, declaration of surplus property staff.
Uh, yes, Mayor and Council, this is a fairly routine item we do every once in a while. In this case, you have several pieces of equipment out at Santa Fe Lake that they would like to designate for surplus. And there will be subsequent steps coming. There's actually a reason why the, this is timed the way that it is. The skid steer that we have out there has gotten to the point that it's been recommended that it just needs to be replaced. It was kind of a, it was a hand-me-down piece of equipment when they got it and they've used it. But the, the wheel system and everything is actually not a, a great application out there with the types of terrain that they, they work on. And the mechanic that has looked at it has said that it's probably in need of an engine replacement and then chase whatever other things follow from that. And so staff would like to recommend surplusing this equipment, trying to get some value out of it, and then at some point, bringing an item to you in one of our upcoming meetings to see if we can come up with a way of, of getting a skid steer back out at Santa Fe Lake, because it's one of the primary pieces of equipment that they use to maintain the grounds. So this is just a step, and staff would recommend that council move forward. The pursuant to our policy, anytime we have equipment that is valued over a certain threshold, I believe that's twenty-five hundred dollars, at least what we think it's valued at, that that decision is made by the governing body to surplus and auction it off as opposed to the city manager. So in these, in the case of these three pieces of equipment, we do think that is the case. So that is why we're bringing it to you tonight. With that, turn it over to council for any discussion or questions you may have.
Make a motion for approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve this surplus property to be sold. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, let's see, sidewalk prioritization project proposal from Deep Walk ADA Solutions Staff.
Yes, Mayor and Council, this item is going to be the first time you've seen it within a, a council meeting context. I have sent out some city manager updates of a pilot project that we've been working on that's related to our efforts to update our ADA transition plan. We found this company that has a, a product that they created that allow us to do our own scanning and evaluation of sidewalks using the new iPhones, which have a LiDAR camera on them. And they run the scans from the LiDAR camera through this software, and it actually generates reports for you that you're able to incorporate into your GIS and also into any of your planning. And I know you can't see this up on the screen, but if you can look on the screens in front of you, we did a pilot project with them, cost us about three thousand dollars, and we did five miles of sidewalks. So Shawna has actually been going out and doing the scanning, and this is a sample of some of the reporting that comes back. And you can see it, it identifies cross slopes, clear widths, gives us a chance to actually document defects in the sidewalk. And so the thought of doing this is, we are paying for this software and using our own labor as opposed to paying a, an engineering company to go out and do this data collection. And our belief ultimately is that that will be cheaper. cheaper than paying an engineering company to do that. And so we would like to go into the remainder of the project for the full 23 miles of sidewalks within the city. This data will integrate directly into our GIS. And ultimately, when we select a firm to help us with that ADA transition planning, we will provide them all of this data that we've collected for them to make recommendations, or directly to our new city engineer, whoever, whoever may be appropriate in that line of communication, to help us start planning our activities. But again, this was a measure to see if we could possibly do that work ourselves and maybe save us some costs. We did the pilot project. You can see some of the examples of, of what those scans produce. And we do think that'll save us money as opposed to paying an engineer to do that. So we'd like to try the full project. But again, this is the first time you're seeing it in a council meeting context. So if you have questions or anything else you'd like us to provide, I don't want you to feel pressured to act on it. But we are actively going through the ADA transition process. And if, and if you're comfortable, we notified all the firms that were submitting that this was part of our plan so that they could incorporate the data. So with that, I will turn it over to council for any questions or discussion you may have on this item.
I think doing something like this is a long overdue, and sooner we get to it, the better off we'll be.
Like to make that a motion, Mike?
Are you ready for action tonight?
Yeah, we, we've been doing the pilot for a while. I wanted to wait until we actually got some of the tangible reports back to determine, okay, did we see value in doing this? And, and with all the things that we're able to make notes of, I think this will be everything an engineer needs to make recommendations.
I'd move for the acquisition of the purchase of the software to study the ADA capabilities of the sidewalks within the city.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Any other questions? Mike?
Did you say earlier, Josh, I couldn't hear you, Deep Walk ADA Solutions, are they from around here?
No, I, I can't remember where their company is based. I want to say like maybe Illinois or Iowa or something like that. It's a newer product, and that's why we didn't want to jump wholeheartedly into it. So we chose to do the pilot project, do five miles, and evaluate what their deliverables were. And once we saw that, we got comfortable with
Have you looked into the company, though, at all?
Huh?
Have you looked into the company at all?
Well, we researched them when we found them originally, yes.
I know nothing about them. That's why I just was wondering, you know?
What can I answer for you?
How long have they been around?
Uh, not long. It's a, it's a newer company. It's a newer software.
We don't know if they'll be here in a year or two years.
Well, you, you don't. But in theory, if you've got sidewalks to fix, those sidewalks won't be here in a year or two years either. So ultimately, I, I think where we're going with this is you'll have an ADA transition plan that has evaluated all of your city facilities, buildings and actual infrastructure. And then out of that, try to lead directly into projects that address any of those deficiencies. And at that point, your data would become outdated anyway, because you're addressing the deficiencies. Until you do, you're getting data that can go straight into your GIS mapping software, and you keep that data until such time as you're able to do projects. And then you can give it straight to engineering companies and say, okay, tell us what we have to do to fix all of these issues. So I see a value in having it done this way. And I do think it'd be cheaper than an engineering firm, because in all likelihood, you're going to pay a survey crew hourly to go out there and do this work. And that, that's been the, the way to do it historically, which is why we got kind of excited when we saw a company that had created something like this and were willing to try it. Because normally you'd send a survey crew out there, they would physically be measuring it with rulers and everything to check slopes. It's, it's a pretty labor-intensive process.
So the same thing from an engineering firm would probably be $40, $50,000?
It, it's hard to say. But I mean, if you're paying them hourly, yeah, I mean, if nothing else, if they had something similar with it on camera, you're still paying them hourly to do the walking. So I feel comfortable paying our staff to do that of, if this collects everything that an engineer would need, and it looks like it does.
Josh, I have a question for Shawna. How wide can you capture when you're scanning with this?
Can you come up to the microphone, Shawna?
It looks like past the sidewalk, you know?
Yeah. So you hold up the iPhone horizontally, and it tells you to just have like maybe two or three sidewalk panels in front of you in the camera. And so it's getting, it's capturing the sidewalk and a little bit of grass on each side. And so you, you take the mid-blocks, and then when you get to the, the corner, you stop, and then you do a scan of just the corner itself. So you get the curb ramps, and it tells you to kind of pan wide a little bit. So you scan the whole ramp.
One of the things we're going to have to do is so that downtown, the sidewalks are wider than these sidewalks that are elsewhere out in the community. And I think what they had suggested there is you walk down the primary path, because ADA doesn't actually require that like all 15, 20 feet wide of that is, is fully compliant. If you have like your five or six foot path, whatever that, that threshold is. So I, I think what we would do in the downtown area is probably go down that center path, because they're essentially three-panel sidewalks. And you walk down the center path, which is the main walking area. And, and you know, if, if these are four or five-foot sidewalks, you can see how far out the phone is going. It may be a 10 to 15-foot top scan, maybe 10-ish.
Yeah, I wouldn't say it's 10 probably, but it's kind of deceptive because the width of the sidewalk, the standard sidewalk, well, it kind of varies, but.
Eight to nine, maybe. Yeah, if these are four-foot panels, it's, you can see how much grass is on either side.
This will handle our sidewalks that have step downs on them?
Sidewalks that have step downs.
In the downtown area, there's everywhere, there's a step down on the sidewalk.
I don't, that's not really what this is intended. This will, I think, capture that main walking path up above. It's not going to look at the steps on either side. So we'll probably have areas that you'll have to have an engineer or someone evaluate, but this will get the 23 miles of sidewalks that we're able to capture ourselves. So it doesn't solve everything, but we think it cuts a chunk out of paying an engineer to do. And then we'll pay the engineers to do the rest.
This also tells us where there's areas of bad sidewalk?
Yeah, it allows you to note as you're walking. So Shawna, I don't remember how it does it. But I, I think if you see broken sidewalk or something disjointed, you physically add a note as you're walking, correct?
Right. So you, you hold the phone like you would if you're going to take a picture, and there's a drop-down menu, and you can select like vertical displacement. So if there's a big tree root that's causing a big gap, or you can select horizontal displacement, a tree obstruction, there's a whole list of things.
And you had to watch and go through one of their trainings on.
Right.
On those before you actually went through and did the pilot. And then they've been sending it out kind of back and forth to make sure you're doing the scanning correctly as we've been going through that pilot.
I think that's good information just for us to have.
Yeah.
Any more questions?
And so when you find a crack in the sidewalk or whatever, we find a discrepancy to be, is the plan to go back in and take that sidewalk out and repair it, or?
Yes, the question of how you do that may still be up in the air, but yes. Because right, again, the way state law is, the adjoining property owner is responsible. I would argue that you're going to have a lot of areas in town where it doesn't make sense to approach it individually. If you have a neighborhood that needs to be repaired, that's the most inefficient way to possibly go about it would be to do a few feet at a time, one neighbor at a time with their own contractor. I think, I think doing that with a bigger contract and having everything redone at one time is probably the most cost-effective way. Now, we will need to discuss that strategy with the governing body and get to a comfort level how we want to tackle it. If you have one-off areas within a neighborhood, sure. I mean, you can zoom in on that, and you don't make it a bigger project than it needs to be. But I think what we're going to find is considerable amounts within a neighborhood. It will probably take it out of that realm of efficiency if you go one house at a time. It moves us closer to the solution. I can't tell you what that insolution is, but this will move us closer.
It's a great tool, but there's a lot of sidewalks in Augusta that are terrible. And you don't need to have a picture of it to figure it out.
But we do need legally need to have a transition plan adopted, and that's why we're doing this action.
If anybody's interested, a quick Google search of Deep Walk says it's a innovation of a class project from Grand Drew College of Engineering at the University of Illinois.
And they started a company out of that project. They essentially designed an app that took advantage of the iPhone's new LiDAR camera, which just came out, so.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, that moves this to matters from and for council. So Mr. Huddleston, I'll start with you.
Nothing.
Eric?
I just want to give a kudos to Rod out at Santa Fe Lake. There's a Cranking Turkey Mountain Bike event was held Saturday, and everybody praised the trails out there and had a good time. There's like 150 riders, so it was a good time.
Mr. Rivas?
I'd just like to give some quick kudos to Butler County Outfitters for taking all the picket fence things and organizing them. And I'm sure they cleaned them up a little bit or whatever. We went down and got ours the other day. And to me, that saved city staff or somebody a boatload of time and energy. And I think that's just really, really cool of them that they would step forward and, and do that.
Yeah, they're a great partner. We really appreciate, we really appreciate it.
Yes. And for a donation to the play park, they will buff that thing up and darken the letters and maybe cut it down.
Get the ends off of it, whatever, whatever you want them to do with it.
Yep.
That's all I got.
Chip?
Just a reminder that the trash routes this week, Thursday, trash picked up on Wednesday, and Friday's normal route.
That's it. Okay. Since he didn't ask about it, I'm going to ask because I've been asked by a couple citizens to check into possibility of putting lights at the skate park and the basketball court. I do know that the basketball court lights were to be repaired later this week possibly, but the wet, the rain fouled that up.
So what, I mean, what was council's thought on that?
First price estimates first.
Well, I was told, when I first asked about it, I was told by the Parks Department that it had been discussed that they didn't think we wanted the skate park lit up because we didn't want people up there in the residential area all hours of the night skating.
That was, that was, I can't tell you when we discussed it, but that was something that was discussed at one point, but it could have been years back.
I've had a suggestion of putting timers on it so it shut it off like at nine or 10 o'clock in the evening.
Yeah. So one of the issues that we're having, you've seen it on social media, is folks pulling their vehicles right up to the edge of the concrete to light it up. And so they're driving over all of the grass and landscaping that we're trying to get established. So lighting may combat that, but it's also possible that you do the lighting, you put a timer on it, and when that timer runs off, people do that same thing. It's possible that happens too. So yeah, but this time of year, you, you hate, you hate the way daylight savings and everything works, because you got a good three or four hours in the afternoon that would be a normal time of year or a normal time to be out there at that facility. And it's just, it's dark early. So I can certainly understand why folks are frustrated by that.
You put some, some type of poles around there so cars can't drive up there?
Yeah, honestly, to, to stop that, I don't think lighting would stop it. I think we would have to get some barricades or, or something up to stop it. That's probably the only way we could. But the question of lighting may be a different thing. So if we wanted to put the lighting up there, I think timers are not a bad idea. So you don't have it lit up all hours of the night, but maybe more time than what they have right now this time of year would make sense.
Anybody else got any thoughts on that?
Like, yeah, my thought, we thought we kind of decided against it because of the residents there.
It was discussed, and that was one of the concerns. But again, I, I think what you're running into a daylight savings time is an eight o'clock in the summer is still broad daylight. And now folks are kind of winding down 5:30 and still wanting to skate, and it's, it's dark already. I don't have a good resolution to it, but I just, I do know it was discussed at the park board level, and that's.
Well, one of the residences, it's only a half a block away, suggested the timer to me. So it's not like everybody around there was opposed to it, so. Yes.
Might be something to discuss.
Did the park board talk about it?
That's what I was just getting ready to say. We'll, we'll do some research and see if we can come up with a good solution for both issues, because lighting does not solve the car issue.
Right.
So we need to, we need to cut back on that, too. So we'll see what we can come up with.
Sir?
I had nothing.
Okay, Tom?
Just want to remind everybody, it's on the utility abatement meeting. It's next Monday, the 27th at 5:30 here at City Hall. I don't have anything.
Mike?
I'm good. Nothing. Thank you.
Okay.
Chip?
All right. I move to go into executive session for 15 minutes to discuss issues related to land use and general liability of public officers pursuant to the consultation with an attorney for the public body or agency which be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship justification for executive sessions under the Kansas Open Meetings Act, KSA 754319B2, and to invite in city manager Josh Shaw, Assistant City Manager Kami Shrope, and city attorney Andrew Marino. The open meeting will resume in city council chambers at 8:23 PM.
Second motion?
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll be back in 15 minutes.
It's important stuff, man.
Does Mayor make a motion to exit executive session where no action was taken?
Second motion.
Got a motion and a second to exit executive session where no action was taken. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, I move to recess into executive session for forty-five minutes to discuss an individual employee's performance to conduct the city manager's annual evaluation pursuant to the non-elected personnel. Matter exception, KSA seven five four three one nine B one. I ask the city manager Josh Shaw to join the council executive session. The open meeting governing body will convene in the council chambers at nine ten PM.
Second motion.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Merrill, make a motion to adjourn, or I'm sorry, to exit executive session where no action was taken.
Second motion.
That's right.
We've got a motion and a second to come out of executive session where no action was taken. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Now adjourn the meeting. Mr. Merrill, make a motion-
Mr. Merrill, make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second motion.
Got a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries and have a great Thanksgiving, people.